Good evening.
Good evening.
Tuesday, February 4th, 2020. The time is 6:40 PM. The City of East Cleveland Regular Council Meeting is now called to order. Dr. Guy, can you call the road, please? President.
Present.
Present. Present. Thank you very much. Next, we have Remarks of Public on Agenda Items, two minutes. Please, for the record, say your name and your address. And only speak on agenda items in this portion.
I'm not going to read because my time flies. Someone to really give me some explanation on ordinance 01-20, as well as, I hope that you guys, this council will pass ordinance 220. And I hope that you agree on what the mileage should be. And in most commercial districts, the mileage, I believe, is 25. And also residential is 25. And in non-commercial areas, it's 30 or 35. So I hope that we can agree on something in reference to the mileage here. And because people are still speeding, and I hope some more lights for traffic lights. And to try to eliminate some of this speed, and especially at Lee and Euclid. I think that light need to be there, because that's another accident that happened in that particular area. But I hope it doesn't, but I think that light need to be up as well. And I think, I just saw Joey Graham come in. Former councilor Graham also asked for that light to go back up. And please let the light at Euclid here and mileage where the children can cross the street, as well as people reading the sign can cross the street.
Good evening, council. Kevin Erbey, 1420. Want to speak on 01-20. Want to know what day of courses that the mayor is required to take? And what committees he reporting this to? And at 500, 5,500, we want to know where is this money going? Section, ordinance 220, the reduction of speed. East Cleveland has never had a problem with speed zones in East Cleveland. And if you are switching speed zones in East Cleveland, you're going to run into erosion, road trip. Erosion to the roads and traffic to other parts of cities that has not yet been invaded by 40-ton vehicles. And we need to know how soon that the required weight limit on these vehicles that are in these 25 mile an hour zones, when the officers of law start weighing those vehicles that come into East Cleveland.
Thank you. Next, we have Communications. Look, Cleveland, I'm sorry. Cleveland State University. Next, we have Minutes to Be Approved, Dr. David Pfizer. We have December 17th, Regular Council.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for December 17th, Regular Council.
I second that.
Dr. Guy.
Council Austin.
Yay.
Council Martin.
Yay.
And Council Smith.
Yay.
This would not include Council Gally for this one. So these minutes are approved.
January 2nd, 2020. Recognizing Council Vice President Corinne Stevens.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Let move that the January 2nd, 2020 organization meeting be approved.
Second.
Council Austin.
Yay.
Council Stevenson. Council Martin.
Yay.
Council Gally.
Yay.
Council Stevenson. Yay. Council Smith.
Yay.
January 2nd organizational meeting minutes are approved.
January 9th, 2020. Uh, January 7th, Regular Council.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for January 7th, 2020, Regular Council Meeting.
I second it. Council Austin.
Yay.
Council Stevenson.
Yay.
Council Martin.
Yay.
Council Gally.
Yay.
Council Smith.
Yay.
January 9th Contracts of Property minutes are approved.
January 7th.
January 7th.
Regular Council.
January, correction, January 7th.
Next, we have January 9th, 2020 Contracts on Property.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the January 9th, 2020 Contracts on Property Meeting Minutes.
I'll second the motion.
Council Austin.
Yay.
Stevenson.
Yay.
Council Martin.
Yay.
Council Gally.
Yay.
And Council Smith.
Yay.
January 9th Contracts on Property minutes are approved.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the January 14th, 2020 Health and Safety Committee meeting be approved.
Second.
Council Austin.
Yay.
Council Stevenson.
Yay.
Council Martin.
Yay.
Council Gally.
Yay.
Council Smith.
Yay.
January 14th Health and Safety minutes are approved.
Next, we have January 14th, 2020 Finance Committee Minutes. Meeting Minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the January 14th, 2020 Finance Meeting Minutes.
I second it. Council Austin.
Yay.
Council Stevenson.
Yay.
Council Martin.
Yay.
Council Gally.
Yay.
Council Smith.
Yay.
And the January 14th Finance Meeting Minutes are approved.
Next, we have January 16th, 2020 Agenda Review Minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the January 16th, 2020 Agenda Review Meeting Minutes.
We have a second.
Council Gally.
Yay.
Oh, Council Steve, I'm sorry. Council Austin.
Yay.
Council Stevenson.
Yay.
Council Martin.
Yay.
Council Gally.
Yay.
And Council Smith.
Yay.
January 16th Agenda Review Minutes are approved.
Thank you very much. Next, Councilman Martin is going to introduce Cleveland State University InvisiNing Team Presentation, Vision for East Cleveland. Councilman Nate, thank you, Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a chance to hear these guys a couple of times, and they're doing something positive in our community. The last time I heard them, they were at the NOAA meeting, and they made a good presentation. So I thought it would be appropriate to have them here. Not only to make a presentation, but to be on our cable stations so other people be able to expose what they're attempting to do. And what they're going to do, that they will explain to you, is going to benefit everybody here, and everybody has a role to play in it, and they will articulate that to you. Roland Anglin is the Dean and Professor of the College of Urban Affairs, and Kirby Date, Community Planning Program Manager. Thank, give a round of applause.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here with my colleague, Kirby Date. We have other colleagues who are not present. Greg Brown from Policy Bridge, and Lynn Sutton, and your student.
Dwayne Johnson.
Dwayne Johnson. It's great to be in the great city of East Cleveland. And even better, we are very proud to be part of a team that's looking at a vision for East Cleveland. If you allow me, I'd like to give you some background on this project.
Can you hear him, everyone? Can you hear him?
It'd be nice if he turned around as well.
One step up here, right.
That, that would be better.
Thank you.
About a year ago, we were approached by the Mayor of East Cleveland, Mayor Brandon King. He told us that he wanted to start a project to construct a vision for East Cleveland. Why? He said that he was looking at investors coming to East Cleveland, stakeholders coming to East Cleveland, and that they wanted to know what was the vision. He did not want it to be his vision. I'm speaking for Mayor King, and if I, please correct me if I'm incorrect. He said, "I want a natural, organic vision." Vision that comes from our stakeholders and our community residents. So we fashioned a project that encompassed this goal of talking to stakeholders and community residents. Stakeholders include agencies such as the RTA, HUD, the business community, potential investors. We all wanted to know what they saw or will see in East Cleveland to justify their investments. We also wanted to hear from community residents about their vision for the city, what their hopes. And hopefully, we can put together a picture of what people want and what can be done. We divided the project into two phases. One, stakeholder analysis. Two, broad survey of residents. And where are we in this project? Well, we've done the stakeholder analysis. We've talked to a broad swath of individuals and organizations. We're very comfortable with what we're finding. And now we're starting the process of talking to community residents. Uh, we've been very, uh, we've been helped along by the ethics of Travel Hart and NOAA. Uh, we have one, we attended one community meeting at the McGregor House. McGregor, McGregor Home. And we're about to start another charrette, which is a fancy word for a focus group on the 17th.
On the 17th of February.
17th of February, alright. Um, my colleague Kirby Date will talk a little bit more in detail about the plans going forward for the survey. But know that we want to hear your voice. And if you ask us what can be, um, you can tell us what you want, your view of East Cleveland now and the future, so that we can put it in the report. And hopefully, it will be helpful in attracting investment to this city of East Cleveland. Kirby?
Thank you. So I'm not used to being the only one talking, because I usually have Greg and my other team members with me, but they weren't able to make it tonight. I just want to tell you what's going to be happening over the next month. Um, we're, um, this is really the listening phase of the, of the project for the next month. So we have the charrette, which is a meeting planned for the Monday night, the 17th, at the McGregor Home, from 6:00 to 8:30. And as many folks as can come would be really appreciated. Um, but on either side of that, starting hopefully sometime later this week, uh, Travel, there's going to be a couple of other parts. There's going to be paper surveys with the same questions we're going to be discussing at the meeting. So people who can't make the meeting can fill out the survey. But we're also, even if people who come to the meeting have some ideas later, they can get a survey and fill it out. So those surveys, we don't know exactly where they're going to be located yet. I think you all are going to be sending them out with your newsletter, which is great. We're on the verge of having the language all tied down. Um, and then we also have a pair of students who are going to be dropping them at various places around the city. So if you see a stack of surveys, take one and fill it out, or encourage your friends and neighbors and other folks to fill it out. And then also, please encourage people to come to the meeting on Monday night, um, the 17th. That's a week and a half from now. Um, so that's one part. Another part is that survey is going to be available online. And NOAA is going to, um, take care of broadcasting that link and the information about the meeting as well. And, um, also, there's going to be some social media, Facebook, and that kind of thing for folks to access that online survey. So I think all of that's going to run till about the 2nd, 1st or 2nd of March. So folks before and after the meeting will have a chance to give their input. And then we're going to process what we hear and what we find out from the survey and meeting. And we're going to then put together some thoughts about a preliminary, um, vision. And then we'll be coming back out to everybody on Monday night, the 16th of March, at the McGregor Home again. And we will talk through what we've found in the survey and meeting, and what, um, what we, you know, any, any adjustments or tweaks we want to make to that. And then that will get turned into the vision. It will, we'll put it together with the stakeholder themes and findings that we have from the folks we talked to, and also some other basic data we're going to pull together about the community. Kind of put it all together, so you have some sense going forward of what the community's values and priorities are. We're not going to be, this is not a plan. So we're not going to be saying on a map, "We want to park here," or "We want this here." That's a more of a planning process, it's a lot more extensive than this. But what we need to do is lay the groundwork for what folks really want and what's important to, to everybody with regard to the kinds of things that can happen, and also with regard to the important places in your community that matter to you. That's about it. Do you have anything to add, or any further questions?
I just want to say it's an honor to serve the City of East Cleveland. Thank you for the opportunity, and thank you, council, and thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You said something in reference to stakeholders as well as, uh, and other organizations. Could you articulate as to whom these stakeholders, as well as the organization, as to whom you're working with?
Well, we have talked to organizations and agencies such as the Housing and Urban Development. We've talked to the county. We've talked to regional banks. We've talked to a number of agencies that invest now in the community and want a sense of how they can invest even more.
And may I ask, as to whom are you with?
I, I am the Dean of the Maxine Government of the College of Urban Affairs, at Cleveland State University.
I know you had made mention of RTA and some other hood, I guess, working with you. But my question is this. I'm, I'm glad you're here tonight, because this is where the rubber hit the road. Hit City Hall. Because this is where the council, whom we elected, as well as the mayor, whatever, to bring this program before this body. Because this is the body that will say yea or nay. But I hope in the organization which you have articulated, that, or where you heard from other, I guess, residents, it, it, it appears to me there's no vision here in this city. As far as, we, we constantly raising houses and things, but there aren't any rehabilitation, nor are there any rehabbing going on in the city. Those things are lacking, because what's going to happen is going to cause gerrymandering, and we are doing it because it's going to make it difficult. I mean, gentification. Thank you. Gentification, because at the while, we will not be able to live here. Because the same thing will happen in Washington DC, if you're cognizant of that, as well as Detroit, Michigan, and also San Francisco now have relocated. Like most of, a lot of the, now are in Oakland. And so that's what's going to happen here in this city. So I hope that you will embrace those ideas that I just articulated and in, 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 in your, um...
Report.
Presentation, or your report, or whatever it is.
I value and hear what you have to say, sir. And I think we can account for all, a lot of thoughts about East Cleveland through the community surveys, the charrettes. Those voices will be heard and articulated in the report. So thank you for that.
We take two more questions. Mr. Sterling.
Yes. Will we have a list of places where these surveys would be placed for people to go get?
So, so right now, if you have any suggestions, let me know. But right now, we're working on a list that actually, uh, NOAA is going to pay some students to go out and actually drop surveys out, like for instance, the library. I can see that this city council meetings will be a good place to be able to have surveys. Um, City Hall itself, I think the administration is going to take on responsibility for people who are going to return surveys, they can return it to the mayor's office as well. And so, but if you had any other suggestions, if you had any other suggestions about different locations, just let me know.
Okay, and we have a newsletter?
It's going to go out in, in the newsletter.
Oh, no. Mayor, we have a newsletter now?
We are currently working on a newsletter, yes.
Okay.
Thank you for this fact. Mr. Beck?
Good idea. I heard the school.
Excuse me, uh, don't, don't get me wrong. I've been here before. I'd heard the same thing before. You know, they, they, like, you're not your little kid. You tell your kids they want, need something, and they be looking for it, don't they? You remember when you was a little kid, they promised you something?
Talk to me.
Well, I ain't gonna never forget. I've been here before. Same thing you're saying now. Think we had four or five meetings. He was there. I don't know if he was there, but quite a few people. We went up to there, gray big sheets of maps telling us, "Where you want this at? Where you want this at?" Last for about three months, maybe. I've been here before. I want to believe. That's why I'm coming, because I'm a believer. I'm a God person, and I believe. What's the plan? I hope this is the plan. We've been waiting on it.
Thank you, Mr. Beck.
Sir, I just want to say, I appreciate your words. I've, I've heard that before. And we're not here to do a plan. I think you should think of us as fire starters, to listen to what the community has to say, what stakeholders have to say. Reformulate it and feed it back, and you can say, "That makes sense." That then precipitates investors and people interested in the city saying they have a path forward. What you need is a path forward. Then you can get to a plan. But I totally understand what you're saying, I value what you're saying, and I want to separate us from anyone who says that we are bringing a plan. We are not bringing a plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anglin. Mr. Beck.
Doctor. Doctor. I want to thank both also. All the council people should, will have surveys, since we out in the community all the time, that we can circulate to. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like the residents to keep in mind that as we look towards the future, and as we continue to move our city forward, rebuilding East Cleveland together, get involved, get involved on a positive note, from a positive perspective, and help us to make this city great. I'd like to thank Dean Anglin and his team for coming out and for working with us as we start the visioning of what we would like to see East Cleveland. Many of you have been here in the great days of East Cleveland. Can't get those days back, but we can do a lot better than what we're doing. And we're moving in the right direction. So get involved, get your neighbors involved, and let, and let's stay positive and pray for them. And again, I'd like to thank you all for coming out tonight.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Make sure my colleagues have a chance to express themselves, if anything. Councilwoman Gally, have any?
Yeah, I'll be having my war club soon, and I would like you to come to my war club in East Cleveland.
Okay.
I'm in war too.
You know the date, Council?
Yeah, it's going to be in February, but I'll get back if you hit the real card, and I'll be back for you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gally. Councilwoman Stevenson.
I have nothing.
Thank you very much. Councilman Tim Austin.
Leaders, we greatly appreciate the assistance in helping us put our thoughts and dreams in a document that we can process, assess, and help us realize the vision that the mayor and the team have. Help us as residents recognize some of the diamonds that we have within the footprint of East Cleveland. So I understand what's going on, and I'm very, very excited about what we're going to do. It's hard.
Thank you, Dean Anglin. Thank you, Ms. Beck. Really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
My colleague. Next, we have reports and announcements from Mayor Brandon Al King.
Thank you, Council President. You only have five minutes. I hope not to go over, but in honor of Black History Month, I won't bore you with the story of how I dedicate this to our legendary Councilman, Daniel Martin. I have printed this out, so we have a couple copies. And on the front, it's honoring one of East Cleveland's own, Honey Belle Bay, which became Kiowa County's first poet laureate in 16 years this past Tuesday. What she says is poetry can unite us all. She has worked with youth, women, police, and other groups using poetry as a way to tackle issues such as social justice. At the council meeting, Belle Bay said, "Through the vehicle of poetry, we've been able to address social injustice. We've been able to address educational disparities. We've been able to address voter rights. We've been able to address domestic violence. There's nothing that can't be tackled through the beauty and lyrics of poetry. Very simple words can change the trajectory of life." And I thought that was very profound, what she said. The picture here is an awesome picture for Black History Month. That is her with her face. The woman with her back hugging her is actually her classmate and fellow East Cleveland resident, Gail Williams Byer, who is now the judge of South Euclid. So I have a couple copies of those up there. Also on the back, following up last month as promised, was the one and only picture of Malcolm X and Martin Luther King. As many historians write, although these two may have started out on opposite ends of the spectrum in social justice, towards the end of their lives and careers, they basically had come to a middle ground. And I think that that is not often spoken about. So again, this is just excerpts of a lengthy article about that. And I have some copies up here. Real quickly, Talking Points. Please, jump in on the Census 2020. They have jobs available, and every person counts, because it will help us and help the federal government dictate how much money we get. I'd like you to know that it's been a long time coming, but the work has finally started at the MLK Center. We have had a number of hiccups and challenges getting it going, but it has begun. It is not open to the public, but work has begun. not open to the public, but work has begun. Our streetlight poles have finally come in. We are working now with our surface, our service supervisor to come up with a schedule to get these poles up and get the rest of the streets, the side streets lit up. As many of you have driven our main streets over the last, uh, two weeks, we, we did finally reach out and get in contact with CEI. It was rough, and it was a, it was pretty, pretty hard discussion, but they have gotten, um, most of the lights on the main streets up, Euclid, Hayden, Terrace. Uh, Tri-C access center, I was at the kickoff last week, and they will be, uh, bringing that access center here into East Cleveland, along with the execution of the Single Mothers' Grant, Special Purpose Grant 33. So, stay tuned for where, where this will be located. In the meantime, we still have Ohio Mean's Jobs over at the East Cleveland Library, and what we're being told is that it is a huge success and being used a lot. We are working to get numbers on how many people have visited and how many jobs have resulted. Stay tuned for that. Like you to know, we've also submitted, uh, a number of grants. One that was awarded is the Crosswalk Study. This study will help us, uh, get funding to then put in crosswalks along some of the streets where traffic control signals are coming out, mainly Euclid Avenue. So, that was awarded, and that study will be done and will lead to that. Also, submitted a grant for some more service equipment, uh, Caterpillar Skidsteer. I did get a note just this morning in regards to the resurfacing of Superior Avenue. I know a lot of times I announce things that are going on, and I don't actually have the dates of when they're gonna start, but I just get excited that we were awarded or, or this is going to be coming. But I do have a date, the estimated begin date for the construction of Superior is April 20, 2020. The estimated end date for the construction of the resurfacing of Superior is August of 2021. So, it'll take over a year for Superior Avenue. Stay tuned as we get updates on when they're gonna start Euclid Avenue. Again, I'd like to thank Cleveland State for coming in here and putting on a presentation about visiting, about the visioning plan. For those of you who, uh, give you a short synopsis, as you look to revitalize and rebuild community, it starts with the vision, land use study, then you go out to the full-blown master plan, and these are all steps in the process of getting this done. So, we are, we are on our way. Stay with us, God bless. Uh, Council President, that concludes my report, unless there are any questions or concern.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that time.
Next, we have receipts of communication. Dr. Jeff?
Um, just to thank yous, one from, um, the brighter home, again, for Council President's involvement in the Census panel, so, again, three in a row, uh, getting involved with the Census this year and encourage, uh, your neighbors and young people to be involved. Um, and then, thank you from the family of Tim Media, um, Renee Chapman, you know, they would have the way her is killed, so, the family's open.
Thanks, Dr. Jeff.
Miss Chapman, is he one of, some of the people know she's funny, got ran all the way, all the way, uh, Stanwood and Euclid.
Oh, yeah.
No, Timia Chapman is just, 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 just the unfortunate child that got hit.
That was a chase situation?
Yeah, that's a chase.
Okay, next, we have reports from council committees. The next regular council meeting will be Tuesday, February 18th at 6:30. The next agenda review meeting will be February 13th at 6:30, right here in this very, uh, ju, uh, council chamber, just chamber. Committees, contracts and property. Councilman Austin?
Hey, man, contracts and property have phenomenal meaning on Thursday, January night at 6:30 is wrong. You talk about so much good stuff, this is gonna be hard for you to contain myself. Circle East, right there at Lisview and Euclid, you know that little community has been thriving, you know that, right? They're doing very, very well. And there is an opportunity for us to recognize a second, you looking like you never saw that little property down there at Lakeview and Euclid. A series of townhomes is doing very well, very safe, very secure and thriving in that area. There is a discussion about putting together the second set of that. That's in the works, and that's what's going on right there in the city for development. The MOU with the land bank, you know we have a memorandum of understanding with the land bank that says they will assist us as we begin, begin to gather and hold the properties that are being set up for redevelopment later on. And that's a part of the MOU that we're gonna make sure we keep a, a good eye on so that we kinda know what's going on with the land that we have with, within our city. There is a study going on for the highest and best use of the land that we have available, the items that we've, the land, when I say the land, the parcels individually that we've amassed. So, we're, there's a study on, that will soon start to determine what the best use is gonna be for that land. So, we don't put something that shouldn't be there, we don't want another recycle center because, you know, it's too difficult to monitor. So, we wanna make sure that we, as a community, select what we wanna have placed on these parcels so we don't get, type of business, we don't wanna have certain businesses that's gonna continue to degrade and, and encourage us towards our, those vices to kinda hold and, and take the community completely out of the game. So, more to follow on that. Um, as we start taking a look at our, um, some of the things that we have going on around the schools, that we continue to partner with the schools, um, other projects like the Huff Bakery project that's ongoing right now, and what's gonna be in the Huff Bakery, such as, you know, some restaurants, some student housing behind it, if, if they continue to grow the plant all the way out to where they've, like, haven't grown out. These are things that are ongoing right now in your city. So, contracts and property, I'm telling you, with so much good stuff coming out, not just the fact that the governor came down and said, hey, I'm committed to helping East Cleveland. Not just whispering in, in the room, he said that on, on national television, but this is not the first time he said that, and you are in East Cleveland. So, the special purpose grant, the mayor talked about, all the jobs that's happening over there, this was a grant that said they're gonna help single mothers. However, the benefit of having over at the library, there's a program going on that helps everybody. There's employers that come to the city looking for employ, employable residents, that he would take them from East Cleveland out to a job site, pay them and bring them back. Hello, that's going on right now at East Cleveland Library, I'm so excited. Uh, Ohio Mean's Job is a facility that, that's sponsored by the state. So, take advantage, take advantage, take advantage. Um, and I had a couple other good notes from the chief of staff that came up and, and gave us a whole lot of good information, things that are, you know, sparks to a phenomenal flame that we wanna see and realize for, uh, our future renaissance for our city. I made a whole bunch of notes, and since I only have five minutes, it, it seems like I'm trying to stuff them down, just push them all out there. There is a community development organization that's working with the Salvation Army, multiple organizations that are working within our footprint. Uh, we, we're trying to see what we need to do with the HUD dollars, the, um, community development block grant dollars, how we wanna have those dollars standing in the future. So, y'all, fill out those surveys so we can actually direct those dollars in a way that absolutely makes sense for your benefit. What is, and speaking of benefits, what are community benefits? Community benefits are things that you can actually take advantage of, meaning low interest loan, you know, programs that allow you grant that they gonna, maybe it might be a grant for just steps, anybody needs step, you sign up on the list, and everybody can qualify for said step, get steps. Those are things that we can do with community benefits, and if we're gonna get, everybody's on a paint program, let's take a look at exhausting that, how can we get some resources to do that? So, those are the things that you need to start thinking about when you start looking at, when these folks come in, what you gonna get? So, there's some, some tax affirmative opportunities that, that are on the table, it's a lot of good stuff. Please come to the community, first, to the committee meeting, that's where the community gets to have the armrests and, and set their own intent in, in, in the pool, and we kinda talk about how we gonna get to where you wanna be as a community. So, please come out, and that's all I have for contracts and property, thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you very much, Councilman Austin. Health and Safety, Councilman Martin?
Yes, Health and Safety met January the 14th. Ethnic Police Chief Scott Gardner and Commander Lundey, uh, two officers assigned to traffic duty, they have thirteen thousand outstanding warrants, thirteen thousand outstanding warrants. Most of, everyone's involved in basically an administration in favor of reducing the speed limit on Euclid and Superior. That's some legislation we voted on today. Uh, we've had a lot of citizens come forward about reducing the speed. We've had a couple of lights added, but we still need to reduce the speed. I don't care how big a truck is or how small it is, we need to reduce the speed on Euclid Avenue. Our kids cross Euclid Avenue to go to Heritage, some of them go over to Shaw, and, and it's in that. We need to reduce the speed, that was one of the conversations we had at the meeting. There's been an increase in accidents on Euclid because of the speed. Uh, one of the key things that were brought up is enforcement. We have to enforce our laws, and we talked about getting signs out, we talked about making sure that the public knows that the speeds are being reduced once we vote on it. Uh, Randy King said one of the key things about speed is being consistent, we need consistency, we don't need one park of Euclid 25 and then another park 35, we need a consistent speed all across Euclid and all across Superior. Eighty-eight percent of the people outside of the city get citations according to the police. Uh, starting pay for our police officers is nineteen dollars an hour, and that's very low compared to a lot of the other police departments. That's why we get a lot of police officers to come here and get their training, they may be here a few years and they go to the other police departments, but they pay much more, that's been an issue going on for fifteen, twenty years. Wages and benefits, pensions for police and fire, that came up. For the fire, Mike Salida, the fire chief, talked about an AFG grant to help buy equipment, we've had that grant, he talked about a safer grant. These grants involve eighteen firefighters, eventually these grants will expire. New ambulance will be here soon, that's good news, we got a new ambulance coming here soon. In many years with firefighting, the firefighting department is repair of equipment, we have a lot of old equipment that had to be repaired, so, that came up as a key issue. Another alarming issue is the number of citizens that don't have adequate insurance on their properties, et cetera. That came up. We are working with, you, there are firefighters that work with University Hospital, they make a lot of money down at University Hospital. The firefighting department get insurance ratings, they either up and save us money when our insurance ratings are up. A memorandum of understanding to get smoke detectors, that's gonna come up, we're gonna be getting, you'll be able to get smoke detectors. That's basically what was covered in, uh, Health and Safety. I will say this, that, uh, we meet regularly, the speed limit, which was brought up earlier, we've been dealing with that for four months now, four months, so we're gonna vote on it. The suggested speed consistently is twenty-five miles per hour, okay? Euclid is, you can get from one end of Euclid within five or ten minutes, uh, e- even at that speed, because our city's only three miles. So, uh, we had someone was hit by a car, we had some police chase and all like that. We, we need to reduce the speed. Mr. Trump, that concludes Health and Safety, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Martin. Next, we have Finance Committee. I, Ernest L. Smith, Chair of Finance Committee. Our next Finance Committee meeting will be February 11th at 6:30, right here in these very chambers. Our, uh, last meeting took place January 14th, 2020, right here in these council chambers. We discussed the end of Dec, the December 2019 financial report, which is the end of the year report. For the year 2019, our estimated revenues were twelve point five million. Our year-to-date revenues, in other words, we ended the year at twelve point seven million. One hundred and eighty-five thousand zero, uh, ninety-one dollars and sixty-one cent more than anticipated. End of 2019 expenses compared to appropriations, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents was appropriated. Our ye, our year-to-date expenses, meaning how much we spent, were thirteen million, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-five cent, meaning we underspent by a little under seven hundred and six thousand dollars. Also, on January 15th, 2020, the Federal Commission passed the 2020 Financial Recovery Plan. Traffic enforcement projected one point nine million dollars, and we received one point eight million dollars in traffic camera receipts. And again, our appropriation, we underspent by five percent in the, in the entire year of 2019. So, we are in the black, and that comes from working together, uh, council and administration. Again, as one of my colleagues said, please come to the committee meetings, as I say each and every week, the committee meetings are very, very, very important, is where we iron out all the nut, nuts and bolts of the legislation and everything that's, um, come in before us. Again, our next Finance Committee meeting will be Tuesday, February 11th at 6:30, that's right out there, Councilman Martin's Health and Safety Committee meeting. Thank you.
Good job, great job, great job.
Thank you very much. Next, we have General Services, Councilwoman Stevenson.
General Services Committee meeting will be held on February 20th in this room at 5:30 PM. We didn't have a meeting this month because I was sick. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Personnel and Appointments, Councilwoman Gouda.
Personnel and appointment, we met on the 28th of January, and I, um, asked for, um, Gardner to come for the no chase, and I asked for, uh, Belinda Cow to come for, um, the badges, because I know that it's very important for, um, employees to wear badges so they can be identified, and when I come into City Hall, I really don't see nobody wearing the badge in the no chase, but it has been interrupted by the mayor. He told me that neither one of the employees going to come in and identify they self to me, because he felt like apology for something that his own agenda don't have nothing to do with moving the council forward to what need to be done. So, I'm going to revisit this, and my next Personnel and Appointment is Tuesday, February the 25th at 6:30, and I am going to, if they don't show up, I will have a subpoena out on it. That's because this is y'all meeting as well as my meeting and our, our, um, residents. It's very important, we need to know what's going on, so that's, that's all I can say.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Next, we have Proclamations. It'd be a real honor to read this proclamation from the City Offices of City Council, City of East Cleveland. Whereas Arthur W. Milton was born December 31st, 1933, in Marion, Alabama, and whereas Arthur W. Milton is deeply loved by his family, he was a loving husband for thirty-two years to Mary Ann, a loving father to eight children, Chris, Kristen Wilson, Elaine Pritchett, William, Trudy Burrell, Walter, Mattie Minifield, and the late Arthur Junior, and their husbands and wives, thirteen grand, great children, thirteen great grandchildren. Thirteen grand-greatchildren, thirteen great-grandchildren, and a host of grandchildren. And whereas Arthur W. Milton moved to Cleveland, Ohio, from Alabama, where he worked for T.R.W. for some years as a ma- machine operator. And whereas Arthur W. Milton enjoyed fishing, hunting, traveling in the U.S., gardening, and hunting with his dogs. He also was an avid Cleveland Browns and Cleveland Cavaliers fan. Whereas Arthur W. Milton will truly be minced by his family, friends, and neighbors as he rests peacefully in heaven. Now, therefore, on behalf of City Council and Mayor Brandon L. King, we acknowledge the life of Arthur W. Milton and hereby express our deepest condolences to the family and friends on his passing on this January nineteenth, twenty-twenty. Our deepest condolences. Thank you. Thank you all. Next, we have legislation. Dr. Guy, please.
Ordinance number zero-one dash twenty is a second read and ordinance authorizing the mayor to continue services for five thousand five hundred dollars of the Ohio Soil and Water Conservation District for its purpose of providing technical assistance and implementing soil and water conservation measures in order to implement the public involvement and public education, P.I.P., requirement under the Ohio EPA Municipal Sucker Storm Sewer Discharge M.S. Four Permit requested by Mayor Brandon L. King and sponsored by Timothy R. Austin, Councilor at large.
Order number zero-one dash twenty bears the name of Councilman Timothy R. Austin. What is your pleasure?
I would like to sponsor ordinance number zero-one dash two-zero and move for its adoption.
I second the motion. Do we have a second? Do we have any discussion?
Yes, I would like to, um, kind of advise for those that don't know what this is about. This is an opportunity for the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the, um, Soil and Water Conservation District. And through this process, they will advise us on the separate, because, you know, over the last ten to thirty years, they've been trying to separate the sewer and storm waters. So now that separated, they're gonna advise us what some of the left and right limits are. What you should pour in sewer, what you should not pour in sewer, and how to preserve our clean water so our children and grandchildren and great-grandchildren can have clean water and at a le- lesser cost, obviously. And through this, we get the opportunity and the benefit of having the training and/or information disseminated in a way that we can all learn and grow so that, again, our great-grandchildren can have clean water at a lesser cost and save our livelihood.
Thank you, Councilman Austin. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Dr. Guy, can you call the roll? Let me call for the vote, please.
Council Austin.
Yay.
Council Stevenson.
Yay.
Council Gowdy.
Yay.
Council Martin.
Yay.
And Council Smith.
Yay.
Ordinance number zero-one dash twenty has passed.
Thank you.
Ordinance number zero-two dash twenty is a second read and ordinance pursuant to section three-three-three point zero-three of the Codified Ordinances of the City of East Cleveland, regulating the vehicular speed limit on City of East Cleveland to change the speed limits to twenty-five miles per hour from thirty-five miles per hour for the streets of Superior Avenue at one-two-five-zero-one to one-four-one-four-zero and Euclid Avenue at one-two-four-zero-eight to one-six-three-eight. Requested by the police chief and sponsored by Nathaniel Martin, Councilor at large.
Order number zero-two dash twenty bears the name of Councilman Nathaniel Martin. What is your pleasure?
I sponsor ordinance zero-two dash twenty and move for its adoption.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. It's been moved and we have a second. Uh, we have a discussion.
Well, we've been speaking about this for a long, long time. Uh, we need to reduce the speed on Euclid and Superior. Twenty-five miles per hour across Euclid and twenty-five miles going up Superior. It's a reasonable speed. We've had some issues over the last few months with people being a chase coming through, but also a lady getting run over at Roseland, Euclid. And this discussion of the mayor, the fire chief, police chief, and all the key people and citizens have come forward so the regulation is twenty-five miles per hour. And I think the key point is, with the mayor particularly, and that's consistency. We don't need to have one area where it's twenty-five and another area where it's, where it's, uh, thirty-five. Also, the law stipulates in the school area that the speed is twenty. So it's time to, to vote now. Uh, we've discussed it enough, so I hope that we can get support of reducing the speed to twenty-five miles per hour.
Uh, Councilman Austin?
Uh, this, this question is actually for the mayor. I want to see if we got those, those speed limit signs posted correctly and is used properly marked.
So Euclid is not properly marked. Uh, we do have the signs. Uh, a number of the signs have come in. We have a number of signs on order. As we look to put the signs out, we had to do a traffic study in order to do it. So we reached out to the Ohio Department of Transportation and per the last traffic study done, it was thirty-five. So, um, so to go arbitrarily and change the signs without the legislation, I just, you know, let's just wait till we decide on the consistency. So we have, we have the signs. Um, we're waiting on council to give the thumbs up on what you did.
I just want to make sure that I'm clear on my question. There was some discussion about sign not being present, it should be present. And the, uh, either not or mismarked. And what I was, what I was asking for prior to was to actually, if the marking should be thirty-five in certain areas of the avenue, I wanted to have a thirty-five mile per hour sign posted. And that reflects the correct marking for the speed, um, signals or signs in those areas. And that's what I asked, if you could be supplying us to, to do that. Then we can have the police go out and do what the police are supposed to do to properly, um, enforce the speed limit. And then we'll see how, if there has been some adjustment. And, and, and again, I'll commend you again because the police have been out there pulling folks over and making it seem like somebody actually cares in the city and slowing the folks down. And I've, I've heard people just pass through and go, wow, the police out there doing their thing. Now, I sent your picture, again, doing what they're supposed to do. And I, I know for a fact that that made an exceptional difference, and I think that, I had a note about the crosswalks because we said we were, yes, there were some crosswalks. We had said twelve weeks and I don't know what we're doing right now. So what, you got some update on crosswalks, sir?
Yeah, so in my notes, I forgot to mention that, that crosswalk was delivered today.
Oh, wow, see?
Crosswalk was delivered today. And now we're kind of adjusting or rethinking where to put it. Because remember, we're gonna put it right here, but now we gotta light it, so.
So, um, it is, and I just want to remind our residents, we do care and it does matter to us. But we've got to do things in a responsible manner that, that will endure. And I respect to the other council persons that the accident that took place on Euclid Avenue had nothing to do with speed. One was a, a police chase. I don't care if they put the speed limit down to ten. If somebody's trying to get away from the police, they're just gonna do whatever they feel like doing. Um, and the other was a, another person that was in a rush, being irresponsible and not being able to see what's, what's, what's oncoming. And that was a tragic accident. It hurt my heart too. But it had nothing to do with the speed limit on Euclid Avenue. So as we start doing things that are more responsible and more deliberate to control the traffic flow in our city, it's making a difference. I promise you. If you come out here on the weekend or when somebody is, when, when the traffic is high, the police are out there and we, we've, since we started this legislation, we've got two officers that are specifically designated for traffic control in the city. We didn't have that before. We have it now. So there's mechanisms that we're putting in place to not just change the speed limit because you think that's the easy thing to do. No. Put the mechanisms in place to make sure they start working the way they're supposed to work. And that's my perspective. And I want to make sure we do things in a responsible manner for those officers to deal with their money, if they do the job or not. So make them do their job, and I promise, it's getting better. It's getting better. It's getting better. Thank you very much for your time.
I promise I'll get back to Councilwoman Stevenson. Do you have any input?
Yes, I do. Um, the changing of the speed limit or reducing the speed limit on Euclid Avenue is going to drive the people up the side streets to Terrace Road. Terrace Road is already in disrepair. Um, we already have three axle trucks coming up, Grassmere, Page, Chaplain, and that hill on Stan Avenue that the city couldn't afford to fix. So the county, when they put in, when the sanitary engineers put in the new piping and fixed the sewers, that's when that street was repaired. These three axle trucks don't need to be on the side streets. They're vibrating the houses. Our, the terrain in this city is such that, I mean, there's too much traffic or speed or people are, are moving too fast. That comes up the hill, which makes the windows on people's house vibrate. The houses are going to move. It's going to cause us some other difficulties that at this time, we don't need nor can we afford. So that is my concern, and that's the concern that I've heard from my constituents about this twenty-five mile an hour piece. Is that they already are getting traffic from, from, uh, Euclid, and this is just going to increase that traffic.
Uh, Councilwoman Gowdy?
Well, um, we can agree to disagree. I think that we need to, um, slow down the speed for the safety of our residents. And, um, also, I believe that, um, even the whole neighborhood need to be restructured, our streets. I mean, if you go down one street, it's bumpy and you got problems. Every other street, look like every four streets got problems. So the problem is already there. We just need to address the problem. And fixing the problem is fixing the streets. But since, um, we cannot fix the streets at this time and hope that we can fix it soon, the safety is still the speed going too fast, especially for residents. And we is in a situation where we have older residents, more than younger residents in our neighborhood because a lot of high rises is around that. So that's why I'm for that.
Thank you very much. Councilman Martin?
Yeah, the issue is basically safety. There's a lot of caviar to throw in, whatever the case may be. But if we're going, it's from a common sense standpoint, if we're going slower, you can stop quicker than if you're going faster. It's that, it's just basic common sense. Now, we've had the accidents. I don't know all the particulars of blaming someone who caused it, whatever. But as far as I'm concerned, from a common sense standpoint, if we slow down, it's a positive, period. And that's what it is all about, safety. We don't need any more accidents, whatever the case may be. And we have stores on Euclid Avenue. We need people to stop and see our stores and, and stop and, and purchase things at our stores, okay? Uh, with three miles, with a mile being a park, so it's doable. So from a common sense standpoint, that's why I support the twenty-five miles per hour. That's why most of the people who are, the law enforcement is in favor of the twenty-five miles per hour. The fire department is favored to twenty-five miles per hour. The mayor administration is favored to twenty-five miles per hour. It just makes sense. So let's vote on it. I'm ready to vote on it.
Thank you, Councilman Martin. Dr. Guy?
Hey, Council Stevenson?
No, nay.
Council Stevenson?
Nay.
Council Martin?
Yay.
Council Gowdy?
Nay.
Council Smith?
Nay.
Okay, ordinance number zero-two dash twenty has failed. And last ordinance on the document is, uh, Resolution Number zero-one dash twenty, second read. Resolution operating the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding and review between the Northeast Ohio Region of the American Red Cross and the City of East Cleveland, Ohio through this fire department to document cooperation between the two organizations in conducting smoke alarm installations and fire safety education in the community. Requested by the fire chiefs, sponsored by Nathaniel Martin, Councilor at large, Timothy R. Austin, Councilor at large, and Ernest O. Smith, Council President.
Resolution number zero-one dash twenty bears the name of, all council members. Councilman Martin, what is your pleasure? May I sponsor it?
Uh, I move Resolution zero-one twenty for adoption.
Second. It's been moved and second, Dr. Guy?
Council Austin?
Yay. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. I'm sorry. I apologize. I apologize.
Yeah, I, I need to say something about this legislation. Uh, this is the Northeast Ohio Region of the American Red Cross, and they're gonna be putting in smoke alarms. The American Red Cross, a smoke alarm hotline that will be used to accept requests from residents who are seeking installation of smoke alarms. At irregular, at regular intervals, a list of addresses of residential properties that have requested provision of a single station smoke alarm through the American Red Cross Smoke Alarm Hotline. When available, a supply of up to three smoke alarms will be installed in the residential properties on the list provided. Copies of the education materials to be used for the following. A, a home fire safety checklist will be viewed with the residents and information on how to create a fire escape plan. Also, they will provide free batteries for these smoke alarms. The East Cleveland Fire Department shall ensure the following activities and actions are conducted in a professional and workmanlike manner. The employee personnel will report to the addresses identified in the list provided by the Red Cross during daytime hours in appropriate apparel with the appropriate identification to install smoke alarms. The East Cleveland Fire Department employees shall install up to three smoke alarms provided by the Red Cross in the living space of the residential properties identified using the following concepts. The smoke alarm shall be affixed with the residence I.E. installed in accordance with the manufacturer's recommendations. The East Cleveland Fire Department personnel shall conduct a short fire education presentation to the resident at the location that will include supplying the resident with the following. The Red Cross Home Fire Safety Checklist will be viewed with the residents. The Red Cross information on how to create a fire escape plan. The East Cleveland Fire Department shall, at the time of installation, in the residence acknowledge that the alarms are being provided by the American Red Cross. The East Cleveland Fire Department shall utilize the appropriate forms as agreed by the American Red Cross. The East Cleveland Fire Department shall utilize the appropriate forms as agreed upon by the two parties and return the forms in the preparedness director for the American Red Cross within seven days of the actual installation. And lastly, the East Cleveland Fire Department will report month inventory of the smoke alarms that have been to be installed as a preparedness director of the American Red Cross by the twenty-seventh of each month. That's the smoke alarms. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Martin. Here, have any more, no, no more discussion? Dr. Guy, can you call the roll, please?
Council Austin?
Yay.
Council Stevenson?
Yay.
Council Martin?
Yay.
Council Gowdy?
Yay.
Council Smith?
Yay.
Resolution number zero-one dash twenty has passed.
Thank you very much. Next, we have remarks and requests of the public. Three minutes.
This council needs to put your personal attitudes aside and deal with the city business and that's health and safety in the city. And you are totally, it's incumbent upon you to do so. It's personality that's out around here. You ask the question of the mayor, the mayor told you he had the, the, the signs and all this other equipment. And then you still sit here and won't pass an ordinance. That, the ordinance that before you, that's for speed. You wanted somebody else to get killed again, then it would go be on you because you're not doing your job. And I can tell you that. Because we are your boss. And you're not doing your job. When you sit here, it, it doesn't matter. People gonna travel, uh, 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 any of the streets here. They're gonna do other streets or what have you, wherever you put the signs out there. They did it when it was thirty-five miles an hour. They did it when it was... they did it when it was twenty-five. They went through Terrace and, and the only reason they don't go there now, because Terrace is tore up. So, do your job, what you was elected to do. Now, just, now, as I told you before, you passed the legislation, you speak through legislation. He carries it out. He done told you he got the stuff and thing, and you're still not, uh, 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 passing. This is not, put your personalities aside. You are here to do city business, not your personal business, and it affects the lives of the city. And people have got killed here, and you're still sitting up here. This doesn't make any sense. Doesn't make any sense at all. You're not doing your job, and you need to stop this hot pursuit, not even others coming into our city as well as our own city. You're killing people through hot pursuit. Cleveland done killed three people in this city. How many more are we gonna kill before you do your job? Let the record reflect, I have spoken.
Excuse me, ma'am, Jeff, and let the record reflect that the family of Miss Nolan would love for people to stop using that excuse for what happened. The family knows that is not what happened, and they, and I, I know I was supposed to wait until it's my time, but they been asking me to let the word know. They tired of you all using it for what happened to their mother. That is not what happened. That is not what happened. I, 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 we apologize.
And I'm a taxpayer for over forty years, well over forty years. And I'm having a bad problem. It's a drug house. The, no, we did not talk. I have not talked to anybody. I have reached out to the police chief, Mayor Kim, the woman that was, uh, the councilperson for my ward. Nobody has responded to me. Excuse me?
You can give her the address after the meeting.
Uh, nobody has responded to me. This house is a [BLEEP]. I'm not sure that's the exact drug house because there's a small house that sits in the back of it. And my concern is, it sits between two schools, Shaw High School and Chambers. And kids gotta walk back and forth, uh, you know, to get to school from that house. And my next concern is me. We can't get no sleep. People are visiting that house all through the night. Sunday night, I guess they watch the football game, so the traveling started around eleven-thirty. I'm so tired right now, I don't know what to do. I tried to call Ms. Gordy because I was gonna tell you, ask you to put it in the newspaper. My daughter said that she didn't know what good that would do. And people up at the Salvation Army where I go to the senior center, they said I should come here. I usually go to church on Tuesday nights, that's the reason why I haven't been here. But I have been trying to reach out to these leaders ever since October of twenty nineteen. Nobody does, and I know for a fact that they're getting my emails because my daughter knows how to look at it and see that it's been delivered. And then I, I was telling them about the all-night parking. So, they came out and put around five signs on him to say that, uh, parking is from, that they should, from three to AM to six AM, no parking. But that's all night. They visiting this place all night, all night, opening and closing car doors. They got those loud exhaust systems on the car. They rear up the engines. I have bags of leaves, you know those brown bags of leaves? Trash bags, old tires barricading my driveway since October because the way, the way my house is, the drug house is like diagonal, so, they park across the street, and then when they leave the drug house, they wanna take a [BLEEP]. I did notice the woman that works in the drug house, I know almost all of them because of my fall through the night.
Excuse [BLEEP]. Now, we go, um, the mayor is always around.
I'm not finished one second. I'll, I'll sit.
We have, we have to go by the rules.
Don't go by the rules. But what I wanna say is, I need help with that. And if, and what else I wanna say?
Please stick around.
If, if you don't have the authority to help me, at least direct me to the people that can help.
You in the right place. I'm, I'm, I'm asking you to please stay after the meeting.
I can't stay after the meeting because I got a real early morning appointment. I don't even know what's going on and nothing else to be said.
This is your counsel woman. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. 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 This is our new councilwoman. She's gonna ask questions, members with you or you could do it.
Yeah, I'm going to. I have a serious.
I know because I called somebody else, that, that mail lady I think that was over there. She never returned the call to say she wasn't the person anymore.
Wow. I, I'm going to take care of that. I have, um, scheduled some things, and I have a list of houses, and they're gonna have to move. We're not, we're not gonna have that in Ward Four.
Yeah, because there's people over there that work.
There are people over there that have been there fifty years. There's people in Ward Four that are a hundred years old.
Yes.
And we're just not gonna have it. Uh, people need to be able to sit on the porch, walk the streets, and do whatever it is they feel free to do.
And that's another thing, they urinating over there, so when the weather gets hot.
We also, we also thank you for, for missing church, Miss [BLEEP] to come.
You won't have to thank me for missing church because my pastor knows all about this. It's like ten churches praying for this. Come on, I tell you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Irving?
Good evening, Council Kelvin Irving, one forty-two H M Avenue. I'm gonna start off with positions of power. My position, my.
Excuse me, excuse me, you start your time over, you're being ruled the end of the day.
Thank everybody else in here.
Right. Position of power, I wanna talk about health and safety. I had a hundred thirty-seven shots. The person that's in charge of health and safety still to this day has gotten doctor to sit on council for twenty-six years and does not think. We'd ask you to step down and relinquish your seats, save taxpayers' money, as you have done nothing in the time that you have been here in East Cleveland. The second episode. Child, a child was struck on Euclid Avenue. This child would never get to go to prom, will never go to a wedding, or even graduate. I know Chase policy should have been in effect years ago. You still done nothing about it. A mother of seven was struck at Euclid Avenue, and your comment to the mayor, your frat brother, that she shouldn't have been walking in the street anyway. As the light was there, to this date, we still don't know who took it down or for, for what reasons was it taken down. This mother of seven will never see her children's next birthday, will not, will not watch her kid's birthday, ride a bike, or anything else, and to this date, you have done nothing. East Cleveland is blighted from Lakeview to Idaho. It's terrible. There's nothing here except for more blight. You don't even have a street sweeper. You barely have the police force coming in here to do what, what they're supposed to do, stopping the illegal dumping, and you have less response of the fire because about every week now, every two weeks now, there's been a vehicle set on fire behind the city centers. Do you know how long that fire burns, a, 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 a vehicle burns? It took them approximately, almost an hour for another truck to come. This is the reason why we ask for the personnel appointments to come in to speak to us. This is our taxpayer money. If you're gonna allow them not to speak to us, then stop paying them. Because this is the reason why we come here. And if you gonna sit on, up here and do nothing, you won't make twenty-six years because we gonna stop it now. We ask some councils that are not doing what they're supposed to do, step down, save us money. My last and final closing, we have a mayor that does not reside in the city of East Cleveland, has no care about what East Cleveland does. I've seen this time to times in the past ones that we recall, and I hate to say it, but in recalling, we're gonna take the council president and somebody else up here. One more second. Save our taxpayers' money. We ask that the. Excuse me. I'm going. Thank you, Mr. Irving.
Hi. My name is Conroyson. I'm a math teacher at Shaw High School, and I'm proud to say my, uh, students won a competition through Samsung where they've won fifteen thousand dollars in handouts. That one's all for tomorrow. In order to increase it to fifty thousand, they have to present their results to the community. So, we're inviting you to a, um, a safety panel discussion, which is on February fourteenth at Shaw High School in the media center, and I want to pass it to you.
Thank you.
And can you please hear one to the man? Yeah, so if they, um, they're gonna, they're gonna record it though, and if they win, they win fifty thousand.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Shirley, this is Patrick, eighteen eighty-four Hillside Avenue. I have a couple things, uh, I'd like to discuss. Number one, uh, a traffic light back on Barnett and Calamere, um, it's a dangerous intersection. It's not straight through. It, it curves around where Angel Mia's Pizza is. People in walkers and wheelchairs are trying to cross the street, and cars are coming different ways because nobody knows when to stop. So, uh, we're suggesting that a traffic light goes back up at Barnett and Calamere. Also, I wanna talk about the census. Uh, we were given information tonight here about the census, but the people on TV really don't know what the census is about or where there's job opportunities, and I just have a little information to share in result, in, as a result of what the census really does for our community. Uh, the result of the census helped determine how, but how billions of dollars in federal funding is distributed throughout the county, the city, and whatever. Uh, East Cleveland, we don't participate like we should in regards to the census, so we don't get enough money for, uh, our roads, for hospitals, for fire departments, or for senior services. So, it's really important that people start looking at the census as a positive thing instead of a negative thing. I have no idea why people don't respond to the census, but it's really important, especially for East Cleveland. Also, uh, we were given information about census jobs, and, um, tomorrow at the Five Points Community Center at eight thirteen East one hundred fifty-second, from ten to two P M., they'll be taking applications for anybody who wants to apply for a job for the census, and I believe the census that the job start at twenty dollars. So, it's a, it's a temporary job. You have to be eighteen, valid social security, U S. citizen, a valid email, and don't have a criminal record. So, and also on the form that, um, the council gave us tonight, there's a recruiting session at Virgil E. Brown, uh, February twenty-fourth, sixteen forty-one, paying from nine to noon and one to four, if people want more information about the jobs. Okay, that's all for the census.
Just provided by the mayor?
Whoever. Anyway, um, wanna share some information about voting. Voting this year is so important. So, we really need people to come up, well, register number one. Early vote for the primary starts, uh, February nineteenth, and the primary is March seventeenth. Also, for the primary, we will be voting for who's gonna run against Donald Trump. So, it's really important that we get out and whoever you think should run against them, to express your opinion about that. But the most important election is November second. Everybody needs to get out and vote to get rid of this man. Now, we came out historically for Obama. Now, we coming out as a necessity for our very lives to get rid of this crook on November second. Lastly, uh, lastly, uh.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. Brad.
There was a video for HT, HGTV that's gonna be shown. We're gonna get some money.
My name is Paul Glenn Davis Junior. I wanna say, oh, I live one thirteen, one three eight five five Superior Road. I wanna say Cooney Store, those people trying real hard to get that store up. You have to remember now, these are new people. They ain't the same people only before, and they're really trying hard. The other thing, I wanna know, when y'all get that elevator? I, I'll be eighty years old, it's hard for me to walk up, that's my step. Can't do it. There's a reason why that elevator is there, for people who can't get up the steps, okay? And I went down and dressed, why is it not working? The other thing, I had a meeting, prosecuting meeting, which I used to say is a good meeting, no, it's an important meeting. And I had a, the police department was there, brought toys for the kids. Quit, quit meeting, but there was somebody in my meeting, had a camera, and you can't do that. People's lives are staked by me. And if I find my picture in a magazine, I'm gonna sue them. I have nothing against you or the paper. I have nothing against nobody, you're right as right. And I got a lawyer right there. I ain't got no problem. But right as right, come on. I'm not here, just, I'm here to help. So far, it was a good meeting tonight. As far as I'm concerned, we had that right to them all the time. But we gotta do better. Hear what I say? We gotta do better, okay? I ain't blaming y'all because law and stuff happened way before y'all got here, forty years ago. Sorry that y'all on the end of it, okay? Gotta get that elevator fixed. You gotta get that street cleaned up down there. I don't know if you lived there or who lived there, just gotta be cleaned up. That's the law. We need some inspectors. There ain't been no inspector up here to tell y'all what's going on out there. Who's in charge of inspectors? If I wanna get a house, there's violations, then I gotta come to y'all before y'all pass and say I could have a house. The inspector tells you, well, the violation, violation, then he come back and tell you, I did it, then I might get the house if y'all say so. We got no inspectors. We got to have inspectors, come on. He ain't no inspector, he's the mayor. Y'all ain't no inspector, she ain't no inspector either, she's the law director. She know what I'm talking about. Come on, you can't talk about the street. When all the wall was in office, they told him, oh, you can change the, the street signs anytime you want to. Northern Road, and he turned to twenty-five, it was thirty-four. He, he didn't come to y'all, he changed it. He didn't know he could do that. Hello? You hear me?
Thank you, Mr. Dave.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Police department told her, good job, so did the fire department. I don't know what we do without.
Amen.
May it keep my counsel, but I can assure, Justin Anderson, one for, 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 I can assure you that East Cleveland, some rock reporter was not at that meeting. It's a pretty boring meeting, and I can find out the information somewhere else, but let me remind you, that is a public meeting, and if you decide to take your posterior there, you can be recorded just like everybody else in that public meeting. So, let me continue where I was going. First, I wanna talk about CMA board position. Every three years, the CMHA board, there's a position that the mayor appoints a board member to the CMHA, uh, and, um, every three years, he's supposed to come in front of council. Uh, and, um, every three years, he's supposed to come in front of council to get, uh, approval for his reappointment. He's not representing the city properly. We just had a ninety-year-old lady without water because C M H A and some commotion between those two. So we need to replace him on that board, and that needs to be addressed immediately. He has not been coming in front of this council every three years. Um, if any resident would like to advertise in the East Cleveland Sunrise, uh, the numbers are through it. We have an issue that'll be distributed tomorrow, starting tomorrow. We're very excited about that. We have an office coming soon. Office hours are inside the paper. The paper is to build transparency between city government and the residents, which we don't have here. We don't have in different cities. That's a major problem across the country, and we will bridge the gap here in East Cleveland. Some people may not like what's in there, but I can assure you that the information in there is true. And there is links in different sources to lead you to where you can find out more about it. And sorry that there's some stuff in there that may seem crazy, but the residents need to know how their money is being spent. So if the mayor hires his best friend to pay him twenty-two thousand dollars to cut nine locks in the city, it needs to be talked about between the residents, whether someone like it or not. So that's what the paper is for, to build transparency. There'll also be great stories in there about our schools. We'll cover different areas in the city, because there's a lot of great things going on in this city. We wanna make sure that that's in there too. I'm glad that they didn't pass the speed limit on Euclid. There needs to be some more studies and things found out before we do that. I believe it may be some type of legal concerns since the U S route, you know? So, um, also, Ms. Gowdy tried to address the no chase issue. Someone obstructed her official capacity as a council member and said that employees will not come. And she apologized for a paper, which that's obstruction. You cannot obstruct the official business of the council member. I'm sure a criminal complaint will be filed by a resident. I'm sure, I don't think she will, but I know a resident is looking into that. So look forward to the next paper. And, and, and some people may not like it, but I can promise you, if you don't like it, sue. And I can always promise you, there's a link that will tell you where to go get more information. The paper is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I have a better picture.
It's only helping y'all.
Ms. Walcott?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name's Gladys Walcott. I live at one three three one Norton Bird Avenue. Wanna compliment you guys on your committee reports this evening, they were very detailed. And I certainly appreciate that. I just don't have, I just don't have the energy to go to the committee meetings, but those were some really good reports. Um, does, um, police chief and fire chief have a name? We just have police chief and fire chief, so I would like to know who they are. That should be public information, I would think, instead of just putting police chief and fire chief.
That's the name.
Um, also, uh, I didn't quite understand about the, um, twenty-five mile... It's an hour, and the traffic being turned and going another route. I didn't quite understand that. Uh, I know, you know, there was an explanation, but I wasn't clear on it. So if you can just clear that up for me, I appreciate it. Even if they wanna leave Euclid and go up Terrace, there should still be some traffic control even there because the schools are there and residents are there. So, um, I wasn't quite clear on that, on the council, how, um, the president voted against it. Two people, three people voted against it. So, you know, I'd like an explanation on that, that's all, you know? So I can understand what's going on. And I do know, I don't know if you said something about the trucks coming through the residential area, but there's a law against that as well. So, uh, that can be controlled also. Um, and there was a lot of information this evening, and I certainly appreciate it. Uh, smoke detectors, uh, you have to put your name on a list in order to get the smoke, smoke detectors. With the fire department, you give your address and name to the fire department, to the nameless chief or to whatever.
Mike Salika is the fire chief. It's not only for that.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I know. Um, and, uh, good meeting. Thank you for your service, and I know it's not easy. I know it's not easy. It's a difficult job being here in these seats. Okay. Have a blessed evening.
Next we have, we're gonna thank you all for your comments and requests. Next, we have response of council and mayor to remarks of the public. Five minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to thank you all for coming out tonight. If any of your questions or concerns are not answered, I will assume my usual seat outside to field any of your questions and/or concerns. Couple remarks. It is always safety first. We've heard it a number of times. It's always safety first. And as such, we will bring the twenty-five mile an hour legislation back before council so that they can vote on it again. Sometimes it just takes more storytelling, more information, and as more information is processed, people change their opinions on the twenty-five mile an hour. Let me give you this. The, Mr. Erins. Do you remember Mr. Erins? Right? Mr. Erins was a business. Across the street from Mr. Erins is a house that was turned into a store. It's got a blue roof on it now, right? Remember that little five-and-dime store that's like on the other side of Euclid? And somebody put a new roof on it recently? You know where I'm at? You know where I'm at?
Right across from the plaza at a big, big house.
No, no, down Euclid going towards Case. Right? On this side of the street, there's a small house, but it was a store. They were selling, uh, potato chips, pops, cookies. They were selling that out. It was a liquor store one time. Remember that?
Yeah.
Across the street from that was Mr. Erins, right?
Right.
Two businesses. Now, per the Bureau of Motor Vehicles and the Ohio State Department of Judgmentation laws, business districts are twenty-five miles an hour.
Thank you.
That is twenty-five miles an hour. We write somebody a ticket, they gonna take us to court. Why? Because the businesses are gone. Right? So we need the legislation so that there's no question as to what rule goes where. Right? That's why you need it. It is still zoned business, but there's no business there. Come down Euclid, right? You have that at a number of different locations, which is why I just said Lomax would change any of the signs until after council votes on it. We're gonna bring it back to you and keep giving you more examples, answering more questions as to why it needs to be twenty-five miles an hour for consistency, safety first. Let's hope there are no more mishaps. Back in front of you. We do have inspectors. Our fire chief is Mike Saliga. Our police chief is Scott Gardner. Right? So we have a new order, new rankings in the police department. Uh, yes, we do have inspectors, and thankfully, we were able to hire some more building and housing inspectors. One of them, who was part-time, actually has a condition and he's still in the hospital. He's been there most of this year, so, uh, we'll continue to pray for him. As we've always stated, it is our city. Let's take our city back. Uh, with, ask our residents to be vigilant as we take our city back, and it'll help us. Please, please do not put yourself in harm's way. We talked about it with the dumpers. Get a license plate, the video, what the car looked like, something. Please, please stay out of harm's way when helping us take back our city. That concludes the call, Council President, unless there's any questions or concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Nathan Martin?
It's an honor. I rise to speak. Politics and personality, unfortunately, that one goes away. All my years on this council, I've passed legislation and pushed more laws to help people than anybody, and I don't apologize for that. I'm gonna give you a few examples. I've done so much, I can't cover enough. Let's start with, uh, Shaw High School. When they had an opportunity to go to Beijing, China, the council sit around. I said, we gotta do something. Ten thousand dollars to help them go to Beijing, China. That's one thing I'm proud of. We never had a jobs program run by the city. We employed about fifteen to twenty of our youth that cleaned up the city, sponsored that, pushed it. This was under the Ed Bru administration. They stepped in, they did it. Our kids got a chance to clean the city, and they, they took pride in the city. Okay? That's another piece of legislation I'm proud of. Uh, the special purpose grant. And I'm, and that's right here, and I'm gonna thank my fraternity member, who happens to be the mayor. That, it started out with two million dollars. We spent all but about three hundred and forty thousand. It's sit for over twenty, almost thirty years. I kept bringing it up and bringing it up and bringing it up. He stepped in, and we got the three hundred and forty thousand. Now we can employ some of our single mothers for work. What have I got? I have a, I'm the city leader of this Democratic club, one of the best in the county, they tell us, that comes. All right? We have a great turnout, and what do we do? Try to get people to vote. Now, sitting up here, it's not easy, but anyone has the option to, to run for these positions. But to step up here and always be negative and pointing out what you think somebody's short coming here, look at yourself. This is African-American History Month. Dr. King, Malcolm, all of them went through this kind of stuff, right people? The question that I would ask, the question that Dr. King would ask, what are you doing in your community to make things better besides complaining? Okay? And I tell people all the time, I said, if you're complaining, but you're not voting, you're not participating, you're not doing anything, what difference does it make? It's easy to complain. It does. We're moving in the right direction. I don't take this stuff personally. The whole issue on this, on this speed thing is safety. You can cut it any way you want. It's all about safety. If you don't have enough common sense to see that if you're going twenty-five instead of going thirty-five, you need, you need your, your mind examined. You, you really do, you need a circumcision of mind for great intelligence flow. It's simple. But I know what this all is. It's about politics and personalities. You can go up Terrace or you can go down Shaw, you have those options, but you need to slow down. That's what it was all about. And, 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 and you know, the irony of the situation, if we've been spending so much time, and I thought we hit got there. We had a meeting a month ago that was super, and then all of a sudden, something changed, because they don't like this, and they don't like me, or whatever, can't split B. This ain't what we're here for. We're here to help people. I will be here as long as people have me here. And once it comes to the point that they don't want me here, I'm gone. I'm putting my time. I have been the longest-serving councilman in the history of East Cleveland. I'm gonna apologize for that because I'm good.
Thank you, Councilman Martin. Councilwoman Gowdy?
Oh, man. Now that was dinner. Um, I wanna thank each and every one of you for coming out, and I do want to say that, you know, the newspaper will be coming out, um, real soon, and look forward to the news. Because I'm the type of person, before I even got on council, to say some news, even if you like it or not. I had newsletters going out, now I got a newspaper. So we gonna put a lot of things in the newspaper that's going to help you, to enlighten you, to know what's going on in the city. And also, um, Coney's is getting good. I walked in that store, and it looked beautiful. She's working very hard, the owner is working very hard at Coney's. She changed the store name to Saymore's, but she had a problem. For the last month, she's been trying to get her food stamp license. In some kind of way, she's blocked getting it. So I'm gonna work on that to help her try to get her license. So I am working hand in hand to get her food stamp license. So we gonna see what the problem really is. And, um, I thank God for the, the lady that was, uh, out of water. She's ninety years old. She was out of water. She gave me a phone call and gave us a phone call, and we helped her in a lot of ways of getting her water back on. So this is what I've been doing all the time before I even got into this league. You know, I'm an outreacher and I help people anyway. And, uh, also, um, my committee is personnel committee and, uh, um, and appointment. Um, it's, it's like, um, when I ask for something, I'm not going to beg you, it just should be done because this is why I, the people put me here. You are my boss. And y'all had put me here, and I have to do my job. And not to do my job is hinder me to go forth in what I need to do for you. So I'm going to revisit that for the personnel department and, uh, and, and to make sure that we get some clarification of the people that I asked to come. Not the people that you choose that, that, they can come or not come later. You know, this is my chair, and I'm gonna chair well, just for my people and the people in my ward that chose me to take the seat. And if you didn't choose me to take this seat, I'm still here for you. So, um, I needed to ask a lot of questions at that time, and I still going to ask it when my chair come back around for my meeting. Um, um, about, uh, Ms. Harris? Okay, like, like I said, I'm here for you too, you know? And I'm, I outreach, like I said, I've been doing this for years. If you feel like you not going nowhere, and if you wanna put an ad in the newspaper, you can because this is an East Cleveland newspaper, so you are more than welcome, you and your daughter. So that's all I have to say and thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gowdy. Councilwoman Stevenson?
Uh, Ms. Harris, um, I have your address, the address of the house. Here's some information that will help you contact me in the future. Um, I have a list of drug houses, and I'm going to be having some meetings, and they're all gonna have to move. Um, workforce been plagued with this long enough. It's gone on far too long. Um, and I don't have a lot of patience with that. They'll have to move. As far as this traffic situation, um, and I'd like to just clarify that that lady that got killed on at Stanwood and Euclid was an unfortunate situation. However, the situation did not result as a fact of that light being taken down at Stanwood and Euclid. That light that was at Stanwood and Euclid was a caution light. The day they took that light down, approximately five years ago, I observed myself them putting up a stop sign, okay? Um, that stop sign has been there ever since. Two weeks before that lady got killed, I sat in this room in a health and safety meeting, and I asked that the lights, the streetlights on Euclid be put back on, and they blew me off. Two weeks later, the lady got killed. That lady got hit down there because there's no streetlights down there. There was no streetlights down there from the bottom of Euclid, where you come into East Cleveland, all the way up the right side of that street. And that's, that's, that's what needs to be said in the public, because that's the truth of what's happening out there. I don't have a lot of patience with, um, bad information. And, and a lot of bad information has been put out about what's going on on Euclid Avenue. The child that got killed down there, I think it's a disgrace. The hundred and thirty-seven shots, I heard from my house. I am not, I'm not feeling good about any of it. But what I can tell you is that, at this time, nothing has been done, but that does not mean that something will not be done in the future. Um, I have plans to address some of the things and hope this council will join me. Um, I have plans to address some of the things and hope this council will join me. I've been busy, I've had a backlog since I took this seat. And so I've been busy clearing that backlog, I'm almost there. Um, this week I have meetings, all the rest of this week around some pending issues in Ward Four. So look forward to some change in Ward Four. The Ward Four newsletter is out, it's posted on Nextdoor, which is a platform in the community and our community is Allegheny. Um, the newsletter is also posted on the East Cleveland City Council's website. So you can go there also and get information about what's going on in Ward Four. Okay? Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Tim Austin?
Thank you, brother president, we appreciate you. I wanna, um, ask, well, I got a couple of notes I wanna share before I ask Dr. Gotta share some information. Um, cause we are a community that is, is growing and we are walking past a lot of people that are ill in our community. You know, and, and I don't really know how to help some folks, you know, somebody might identify, somebody has a, a challenge. And I don't really know how to address that, so we wanna be able to identify some of those challenges, whether mental or physical. So we can kinda start, you know, leading people to, to, to go through the process to get their own things. Um, so before I ask Dr. Gotta help me out with some information, I'm gonna, you know, kinda share some of my other notes. Um, the safety plan that could help our students at Shaw High School will take place on the fourteenth of February at eleven twenty through twelve oh six P M. On the fourteenth of February, which is indeed Valentine's Day, but that's the time that we can actually increase our children's opportunities by thirty-five thousand dollars, so it's worth showing up. Okay, um, there is some, some documents that are gonna be floating around and they're very slanderous, you know, and, and slander or insults is not necessarily, um, a good thing for, for building the aesthetic, the outward appearance that others will see when they pass by us in, in the city. So we have to con- consider that this is indeed Black History Month and I, I, I left myself a little note right here. What I said is, how do we treat Black America this month? You know, so as you pass by your brothers and sisters, instead of working on tearing them down today, give them some information, something they can grow on. And, and that, that was my note to myself, I'm gonna make sure I do right by the council and, and by the mayor and, and by every resident that I pass by, because this, this is the time where we have to start looking at how we build up each other. Okay, so again, this is indeed Black History Month and we're gonna do that. Um, I, I, I had a question I wanna leave on the table. Don't I have to, you know, feel kinda messed up because I asked this question? The paper that they keep on talking about, I wanna know if it's a for-profit paper and if it is indeed a for-profit paper, we should probably consider the way we, um, how can I say, solicit the profit from this table. So I'm gonna continue with my note. Um, um, you were, a- and there was a, a council before this council and the speed limit was the same way it is today. This is not the first council had to deal with this or had the opportunity to deal with this, so we're gonna look on, at previous councils that, you know, that want to direct or ridicule, having had their opportunity and may have missed it. Um, look at it, tax abatement for some of those folks that are gonna invest in our city in the future as, and incentive and that tax abatement will also pertain in a creative way to our residents that are here. So those that can't afford as their property values increase, there's gonna be an opportunity for you to hold on to a certain tax level and I'm gonna leave that up to the administration to work out the dynamics of that, but that is something that is on the table because we do care at this table. We're not just selling for any old thing that somebody's putting across. Okay? The plan to assist felons with employment. So if you have a, a record, do not be in a position where you think you're just stuck without it, that you have to turn to criminal means to feed your family. Because the administration, along with the governor, is working to help us overcome some of those things that have held us back in the past, and we don't wanna be in a situation where you just can't. We have to go, no, that's not the case anymore, you have to be willing to go through it profit. Like what you can get some retraining, some education, some tools that will allow your progress to just excel beyond the moon, so to speak. Okay? Transportation, a mentor for those felons, for those folks that want employment, that's available in our city. We're gonna start going to our library a little bit more to find out what's really going on, because that is the grounding agency within our community for information, for job opportunities and programming from after-school program where they feed your children, hello? Opportunities are over there where you can get some free wifi, you know, a- and a fast network, if you will, as well as right over here at the Winnebago Renaissance, correction, at the Winnebago Rapid Station. I got a meeting tomorrow, so we're charging some money, I'm a R. Visit the East Cleveland Library. There are inspectors on the street. They are doing a phenomenal job and taking their job seriously. There's a new gentleman that got, he drive, every time I see him, he got on some cool gear, whether it's like an orange jacket and some green pants, where he's out there on behalf of the city, actually inspecting. I seen a, a gentleman that does not live in the city with the inspector out there pointing at the house saying like, yeah, we bout to get serious. And there are people that are doing their job to the utmost. Okay? We do have a street sweeper. It's new, and, and we, we making it work. The leaf vac i- is working, is, they working on it and I seen him out there today dumping some good leaves out, so that is a, a process that's ongoing. If you have not received those services recently, please take the opportunity to call on the service department and, and let those guys come out and, and give you the assistance that you need, because this is indeed, you know, a, a winter that I've not seen in a very long time. Last note. I wanted to say thank you. Because, you know, people are cleaning up all over the city, even in the wintertime. I seen some folks out there cutting grass in this city and cleaning up, that's not because they don't care, that's because they do care and it wasn't taking place in Ford's here, respectfully. It's where we live. We are doing what we have to do to take care of our properties and for that, I say thank you, brother president, and again, thank you, residents.
Thank you, Councilman Austin.
I asked Dr. Gotta read that information, but thank you, that's it. If you can have to do it, I really appreciate it, brother president.
Thank you, um, Councilman Martin wants to make a statement, very important.
Yeah, I, I wanted to say that, uh, her name is Carolyn Cockfield. And she used to work at the Civic Center, uh, two years ago. Her husband Ross Cockfield works at the library right now. She died a few Saturdays. So I just wanted to, to put that out there. Carolyn Cockfield, you know her.
Thanks for her time.
Dr. Gotta, before I give my closing statements. Workplace issue for, you know, making sure we kinda identify some of the things that are our concern. So you don't look at somebody that maybe have a challenge and say, you know what? That person, well, just find a way to help. You know, let's not tear them down, let's, let's find a way to identify the, the problem and start helping, um, our, our people as much as we can. So if you can't find Dr. Gotta, we'll, we'll, we'll make it another time, but if you can, um, just a, a portion of it, the, the big block definition. The first, the first part, we can do another time, we'll, we'll be more specific. Okay?
Thank you, uh, councilman, thank you, Dr. G. Nice meeting today, I wanna thank my colleagues, Mr. Mayor, Madam Law Director, our great clerk, Dr. G, who works so hard every day.
Amen.
For the people. Our great cameraman, uh, Mr. Andrew. Most importantly, most importantly, I want to thank you all, my neighbors, the great people of East Cleveland. On my way to the meeting today, it started, um, raining and snowing, which means you could have, uh, opted to stay inside and not come out and be cold and wet, but you came out to see about the health interests, rights and needs of this city. And I really wanna thank you for, uh, for that from the bottom of my heart. I wanna thank everyone who participated in the demo list. All the residents, I know that, I do realize that everyone is not a part of a block club, so I wanna thank everyone who I reached out, or they reached out to me, uh, with their list. We have received the emails, so for example, uh, this houses on Third are, are on the list. One of Brimar is on the list and I, I, I'm saying this publicly because I will stay on that and like I did for all the other, like we, actually, we, we, we worked together, like we did for all the other properties, all the other, over the hundreds, uh, over a hundred demos that came down at Ward Three via what the people wanted. Next, uh, I wanna address the twenty-five, thirty-five mile per hour. As I stated before, as far as I'm concerned, I don't look at it as, uh, because I know it keep coming up about personal issues and this and that. First of all, I'm just speaking for me, me and, me and Councilman Martin have no personal issue, but it, it keep getting stated. As I stated before, as far as I'm concerned, is the mayor and admini- administration that brought down the twenty-five, so I don't know why my colleague keeps saying that we have something against him when we actually have been saying no to the administration. I have done very, I have done my due diligence. Some that wanted it to go down to twenty-five, it's a few in this room. A lot of residents who care and are involved don't come to the meetings and I have talked to a lot, I went to a meet last night. The biggest concern was, and it happens a lot around here, is getting the information out to the people.
Yep.
The people don't wanna be riding and get tickets and they don't have the proper information. I'm a part of this government, so I'm, I'm talking about me, I blame me, everybody should speak for theirself. We don't do a, 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 we need to do a better job of going, getting the information out. And I would not sit up here and pass that if I don't have most of the people who I talk to say that that's what they want. A lot of people who say that that's what they want, they don't, they don't even drive. Um, the main concerns were the lights. Taking my time because it's, it's, it's an unfortunate accident that happened on the corner of my street. And again, the, the family would love for you all, the people that keep perpetrating that, uh, lying that their mother got killed because of the lights, stop politicking. Um, we been through this, what, four or five months, so the thing I like about the, uh, Mr. Mayor is we can, uh, uh, disagree and keep working as far as how we wished it, it would have been in the past. So, uh, it been four or five months, me personally, I, I don't need to, I don't need you all keep sticking it back in my face, cause it's gonna be the same. Until we get, until we get what we asked. Uh, old Doc said it was supposed to be thirty-five. Uh, as elected officials, we can't, we can't just have fake, fake twenty-five mile per hour signs out there, thirty-five miles per se- hours, uh, signs out there. Uh, one sign is supposed to be twenty, uh, thirty, twenty-five, but it's really thirty-five, one sign is supposed to be thirty-five, but it's really twenty-five. No, no. So, and, and certain things that I have expressed that if we get the, uh, that if we get together, I might, I might be willing to change my mind, but right now, I go by what the majority of the people want. And I do my due diligence every day. And yes, and, and yes, every day. And I, I'll leave it alone, cause it's voted already, so. Um, oh. I received a phone call the other day, and I wanna apologize on behalf of all of council. I received a phone call the other day. Councilman Martin, we got cussed out bad. About the meeting, personnel appointment meeting that was the other day. Ernest, you the new president, why you sitting there like a bum on a log, you and the elder statesmen? That meeting last Tuesday was our newest councilwoman, Councilwoman Gowdy's committee. That's why we were doing what we were supposed to do and sit here and allow her to run her meeting as she see fit. That's why I beg of you all to start attending the committee meetings. I beg of you all to attend these meetings, the regular committee, the regular council meetings. And I understand everyone can't make it. But at least try to, at least try to. The, uh, committee meetings are ran by that chair. So when you watched that meeting and you saw me and Councilman Martin sitting out, I mean, uh, being quiet, because that's what we were supposed to do. So those of you who are concerned about that meeting, please, um, realize that, yes, I'm the president, but I do not run, uh, the various committee meetings. I'll be, uh, for my last ten seconds, I wanna say thank you all. I wanna say, please, please, not only, uh, we're in a predicament, we're not only where we need you all to come up, to come to the meetings, we need you all to frequent City Hall. Check on everyone who works for you. Every elected official that works for you, every worker that works for you, from the mayor's office to the council office. It is very, very important that you come keep eyes on all of us.
Amen.
All of us. It is very, very important that you check, double-check and recheck any information that us as elected officials put out. Cause we shouldn't be putting out false information. I'll end that way and I'll say thank you for coming out. My colleague Karen Stevens, uh, has an announcement and then we're gonna adjourn.
I did forget to tell you that Carolyn Coxfield's, um, funeral will be Saturday uh, at Cummings and Davis at two o'clock. The council will be sending a resolution to the family.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
One more thing, Ward Three Night Out, which is our, uh, Ward Three meeting. Every second we have to, at the, uh, Bristol Mayor. They lost their door, man, but they, we gonna, we gonna make a, a, a arrangement, um, to get a police officer while we have our, our form of our Ward Three meeting. And it'll also be fun, we'll be giving away free, have some free coats to give out, some free clothes, some school supplies. We're gonna have, uh, light snacks and we gonna handle some business at Ward Three. So with that.
I'm moving to be adjourned second.
Thank you, all the favor.